All right, go ahead and call the meeting order. We'll revise for the pledge of the week.
The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're Rosso?
Here.
Sal Portnera?
Yeah.
Tim Brady? Mark Holmes? Sam Raglio?
Yeah.
Gerald Paradise?
Yeah.
Roberto Fernandez?
Six thousand fever.
Okay, so.
Onto our discussion. A minute before we get started. Can you unmute your devices there? Peter or Jeff?
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
One of you, can you, can you mute your device, Peter? I've been getting some feedback here, background noise. Great, thank you.
Hey guys, hey, worrying, worrying, worrying.
Sorry, certainly, sorry.
I'm sorry, the mute is still not working. If you can do something about it, that would be great. Peter, are you on mute?
I, I will go, I'll try it now.
There are, yeah. All right, I guess we get going. Thank you all for joining. Let's try to walk through the American Rescue Plan Act. The actual guidance was a couple hundred pages, so I've tried to synthesize it down and go through it pretty quickly. Thank you for doing that. So, you know, we'll just kind of go, quick overview of the law. You can update on what dollars are coming to Berlin, half of which have already arrived and are in the bank, the other half will arrive next June. The great news about this is it's not grant we have to apply for, it's just simply a grant to receive the money and then report to them when we spend it. The timeline that we have to follow. If we don't follow rules, what the recoupment process is, essentially paying back to the Treasury. Some things for you to consider. Some thoughts we had on potential uses of the money, again, it's purely potential to start the conversation. And then the last several pages are a deeper dive in each of the four components that are available. I promise I won't go through each of the slide, I'll go through each of the slides, but only need a bullet on each one. So we'll try to go fairly quickly. First things first. You know, overview of, of the law. So, the law established funds for cities, non-entitlement units, of local governments and counties. Berlin is considered a non-entitlement unit, based on our population, we fall into that. What that means is, you may have seen in the paper over the last few weeks, some communities, Hartford and some of the larger communities, had to file a full report, what do you plan to do with this money? We don't fall under that, it's a non-entitlement unit, we don't have to submit that, we simply have to submit by October 31st what we've done, and then each year on October 31st what we've done, the money until it was spent. When the law is written, there's really four uses of the money. So it's a little restrictive, but there are a lot of uses that fall under those four rules. One, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts. So directly responding. Responding to workers who perform essential work, and I'll explain what their definition of essential work is, by providing premium pay. For the provision of government services, to the extent of reduction in revenue, basically we lost revenue because of impacts of, of closing things down during the pandemic. And there are specific requirements and a specific formula to follow with that. And then to make necessary investments, and there are infrastructure components, but they're very specific, water, sewer, and broadband. So if you want to make infrastructure investments, it's only in those three categories with these funds. They cannot be used for directly depositing into any pension fund. And they cannot directly offset a reduction of net tax revenue of the state or territory. So that's an important component. What did Berlin actually receive and then ultimately will receive? There's two pools of money where Berlin is receiving money, one is the non-entitlement unit. The second is the Connecticut senators amongst a smaller number of people as well, pushed hard to say Connecticut doesn't have counties. So states that participate with counties are getting additional funding. They pushed hard, so Connecticut actually has received county money, and then it's allocated by population to the communities within each of our counties. So there's actually two pools of money from which Connecticut municipalities are actually drawing. Our non-entitlement unit share was $3,969,453.42. Very precise amount. The county amount receives $2,078,592.74. So, just over $6 million in total. Comes.
Sixteen cents.
And sixteen cents. It comes in two installments. So what happens is the money comes to the state, by law, the way this law is written, the state has 30 days to pass it on, the state has no authority to alter it, adjust it, modify it anyway. So, we received on June 22nd, the first half, $3,024,023.8. And that is sitting in the bank account, that is Berlin's money used. But, to do that, and I will, you know, point that out, it requires approval from both the council and the board of finance, which is where the meeting tonight is designed to make sure everybody's on the same page of what we're receiving and what we can and can't use the money for. Because ultimately, it has to be agreed to by both, as to what we use it for. The one caveat to that is you've already appropriated $700,000 of this money in the FY '22 budget. So. I actually established a separate capital project fund, so this money is separated out from general fund, it is separated out completely from all of the other assets. And we'll sit there, the intent is to actually spend from that fund because we need to tell the Treasury exactly where we spent the money or what we did with the money. The goal is to keep it in that fund and the general fund for the $700,000. So that's just easier to track and easier to report. Timeline. So these costs, in order to be eligible, have to be incurred by December 31st, 2024. That does not mean that the money has to be spent by that date, so we have to incur it, but we have to spend it by December 31st, 2026. So you've got a window of time. We actually get to keep any interest that we earn on this, which is unusual for a federal bank, we have to turn that back. But considering average interest rates today are 0.1%, that's not the ordinary generous. But anyway. So you can see that the quote, you know, from the interim final rule, the Treasury had to take the law and write rules how to apply to this. So it, it only requires that we've obligated the money by December 31st, 2024, essentially decide where it's been going, appropriated the money, and then we have two more years after that to actually spend. So if a project, capital project went on for a period of time, we can continue to count that. The key here is, if we fail to comply with the requirements within 602 and 603 of the Act, then Treasury has the opportunity to come back and take whatever non-compliance funds we have back, we don't have to repay them. And you can see the window, they would identify it, we can appeal it. But essentially, you've got about 120 calendar days if we ultimately rule that why we spent it does not qualify. So it is not, it's not an immediate response, but it's not a long window of time to, to be able to get the money back. So we want to be careful that we're spending it with the intent of the law.
Kevin, real quick, before you move on. Is there like a checkpoint that we have where if we want to spend the money, we have to ask somebody if it's okay first, or we just spend it, when we tell them we spend on it, they're like, we miss it?
That's the issue, where Treasury came back and said it would not be possible for them to evaluate all of the intents of every community in the country. So we have to read the law, interpret it, and ultimately we apply. And if they rule didn't spend the money appropriately, then they make that final ruling. So quickly, just some things to consider, that we've, we've talked internally, stat-wise, of potential areas to spend the money that we think are worth considering for the community. There is an active HBAC upgrade project for the three elementary schools currently with the Public Building Commission, and they're upgrading, updating the Willard Study, that was the first one done. Right now, the estimate, without going out to bid, is $3 to $5 million per school to do that. Hopefully that's high, but if we use that number, you're looking at $6 million minus the $700,000, you could be looking at $5 million plus to be used against that. I believe this does align, not with the capital project area, but with actually responding to the pandemic. They actually have words that say ventilation improvements in congregate settings, healthcare settings, or other key locations. And schools were specifically identified in the interim rule as another key location. So I think based on that, to be confident, I did ask Connecticut OPM and the National League of Cities, both who have been involved directly with the Treasury, both confirmed without hesitation ventilation improvements definitely could qualify. So I think there's a high degree of confidence that would qualify. And it also goes into the spirit of dealing with the air quality and the air system related to COVID and mitigating if there's a future COVID or anything like that system. So it also seems to make sense as well. A second consideration would be investment in water and sewer system, this clearly is in sync with the fourth bucket. You've got two projects right now that are effectively shovel-ready. One is East Berlin Water. Ray Durama at Berlin Water Control has identified the water pipe system in East Berlin as something that should be replaced over time, you could put the money into that. Second place, on the Berlin Turnpike where the audio intended development is. The pipe right out in front of that is actually narrower than it is before and after. Essentially, that pipe has to be replaced, or it's probably going to be replaced, it probably actually is going to bend around it, putting the wood in where it is. You could do that, which would deal directly with the water and sewer, but also could potentially aid in your economic development too. So that's another area that would benefit the town, you could invest money there as well. You also have the option here of providing direct assistance to individuals into a business that's impacted by the pandemic. If you decide to go down that path, we would have to establish two different paths. One is establishing the criteria, and who's going to evaluate the criteria, who's going to let people apply for it, what criteria to use to actually get the money. The second is making sure that there's a backend audit process. For example, you could give a grant to a supermarket. Say, all your frontline workers, all the people who were out there throughout the pandemic, we want you to give them a $1,000 bonus for going through that. Perfectly acceptable. You'd have to identify what's the criteria toward that, and then second, we'd have to sum that, that would basically be their payroll register to show that actually they did. Because they would be a sub-resident, which means the town is still on the hook to make sure that money is spent properly, even though we grant it to them. Those are some things that came to mind as areas, especially evaluating what other towns have been doing with their money and knowing what projects are in the pipeline. Other, some towns have also been opening up for public comment, holding public sessions and saying, what do you want here? As well as other areas, so that's something we can consider as well. I'm going to do a deeper dive on the next few slides, but I promise I'll keep into the highlighted areas unless you guys want to talk about anything else. So the first one, if we go a little bit deeper, ultimately the 20, 30 pages the Treasury had to explain all this pandemic, the key question is, you're assessing whether a program or service is included in the category, is whether and how the use would respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency. So does it tie in like the air quality at the schools, ventilation, and obviously the transmission of COVID? So you can make a connection, you can't just pick a project and, and go do it, even if it's a valid capital project. Next one, you know, one of the things I think is really important along this first line, highlighted there, while the COVID-19 public health emergency affected many aspects of American life, eligible uses under this category must be in response to the disease itself or the harmful consequences of the economic disruptions resulting from or exacerbated by the COVID-19 public health emergency. There are some, there's something called a census tract. The U.S. Census Bureau creates tracts of area where, where disaffected individuals. So you're dealing with poverty, you're dealing with a lot of, you can imagine the households in the areas are like. Berlin does not have any of those, which is for the community. If you were, if it were a census tract area, it would immediately qualify. You did anything in that area, you could say was to help that group, either directly affected or they're harmful, they're harmed or exacerbated by COVID. Since we don't have that, we would have to have a compelling case if we did something to, in a particular area. So that's the important, it really needs to be in response to the emergency or the harmful consequences to get around that. And then also along this line, as you can imagine, one has a lot of components to it. I mentioned earlier about the ventilation, and this is one of the areas they have other key settings like schools, ventilation improvements, congregate settings, and other key locations. So they clearly have identified schools as an area that could be used in the first bucket. You can see as we go on in the page, there are a lot of things that have identified to use the money for. If you decide to go out and provide it to individuals, households, we have to consider whether and to the extent the household has experienced a negative economic impact. So we have to first identify what would be the criteria, but also the magnitude of any grant to a household. It has to be in proportion to the harm. So if you were making a hundred thousand dollars a year, you lost your job, you've been out for a year, there's a sizable economic impact to that. If you were making, say you had two jobs and you lost one of them and it represented a hundred dollars a week and you were out for eight weeks, you can't give somebody $10,000, there, there's not a connection to that. So while I, I would say three is a valid item, but on this, we have to be very careful how, how we give direct aid. Before I go on to number two, are there any, there's a lot of detail in here, so I was flipping through quickly, I didn't want to take a long time, but there are a lot of uses on this list, I said, there were restrictions, but there are pretty wide parameters available. All right, well, I'll go on to two, circle back. Responding to workers performing essential work. So this would be an opportunity either for town employees or businesses with, that have workers who performed this work. They've defined essential work as work involving regular in-person interactions or regular physical handling of items that were also handled by others. So this would be a police officer, a nurse at the VNA. This also could be somebody who works at a supermarket, somebody who works at a doctor's office, somebody who works at a gas station, somebody like that, any of those, and there's many, many others. They've identified some sectors, even though I didn't highlight it, I will point out that they specifically say the chief executive of the town has the expression to add sectors to this. So long as they are deemed critical to protect the health and wellbeing of residents. So we're on the hook to make that determination, if we get it wrong, obviously we'd have to repay it, but there is some latitude there if you feel that there are severely harmed sectors of the community, segments of the population in there. If we respond, they have a very specific formula. They know more than 150% of their residing state's average annual wage for all occupations, as defined by the Bureau of Labor Statistics Occupational Employment and Wage Statistics. Long story short, as of May 2020, that 150% says you can't put them over $98,175. So somebody who works in a grocery store, say making $30,000, you're probably not at much risk of going over that. If you wanted to offer, let's say, an additional amount to a police officer, you may run that risk of officers in good salary absolute terms, relative to the job, maybe not, but absolute terms, we run the risk of potentially going over that if we offer to police something. Any questions on two before I jump to three? So this is, this could be retroactive, but also going forward, also a combination of both.
All of these items, giving money to individuals, supermarch, would require a common law of bookkeeping, the traffic. Can you grab money to use for the economy?
Yes, it can be used for the administration of it. Now, if we were to give it to, say, a supermarket, give it to a stopper shop, we'll make it easy because I'm sure they have a, a pretty extensive payroll system, a payroll register with the act. So when, during the prior administration, when the coronavirus relief funds were provided, we needed to substantiate where we were spending the money. One of the areas they granted was to say, we're going to assume all public safety salaries are being dedicated to coronavirus relief, to offering relief. So our backup only needed to be a payroll run. We provided a budget and we provided payroll and we were done. So if we did it to larger entities, I don't think the bookkeeping would be too extensive, if we did it to a small amount of pop, that might be harder.
I think if you did it to larger entities and did include their smaller competitor.
Which goes to the criteria, we'd have to establish the criteria and who evaluates. Typically, if you do something like this, someone like me would not be included in the evaluation because I'm part of the chain of actually paying the money. So you want a separation, the person cutting the check and the person determining who gets the check. I mean, you could engage with economic development, with social services, but there could be other groups you might consider, and there might be people in this room, you might want to include in that process, I don't know. If you even want to go down that path, you certainly don't have to, but it is an option.
Look, we'll be doing the revenue loss calculation for 1231.
I will. Yep, once that comes out. That, that's kind of the, so I'll go through a number, that leads us into three if everything's good. So, the revenue loss calculation is done as of December 31st of each year. First question I had, first question everybody had on the call, which was answered is, if we don't lose money, so let's say we've recovered, we get to 123121, we're 22 or 23 and we're okay. It doesn't go negative, we don't give back. If you, if you didn't lose the revenue, it's assumed zero for that, so you get no benefit, but you're not penalized. As you, as you know, our year ends at 6:30, so what we end up doing, everybody, most municipalities across the country are actually crossing fiscal years. So we're creating that. I did do this for 12312020. And high level, what happens is you're not going to be able to look, even if you looked at actual numbers from 12312019 and compared to 2020, it wouldn't be this number. The way they, they set it up is, we have to go back three years and look at our average growth rate over the three years. The Treasury said the average national growth rate is 4.1%, so if your revenue growth rate was less, assume 4.1% revenue growth for the last three years, and then compare it to what you had. Ours was about 3.9%, so not, not far off from the actual. So this comparison is really relative to that number, it's not an absolute, we were down $900,000 in revenue. This is relative to that growth. So when you do that calculation, it comes out to $892,449. You've already appropriated $700,000. So there is another $192,000. One thing to put out here that I didn't have on the list, but it is a consideration for you. I know the debt level is a concern for everybody, we've talked a lot about it. One thing you might consider, I know that General Cho and Steve Wood have come back talking about adding the bond money from, to personal field, from the athletic facilities bridge, about $190,000 in completing that project because it's much more extensive than was anticipated. One thing you could consider is to take this revenue into the general fund. Appropriate fund balance, you can't take this directly because a field isn't going to tie in with COVID, but if you were to appropriate fund balance and then take this into the general fund and let it fall at the end of the fiscal year, you could do that project, fund it in a roundabout way and not necessarily issue additional new bond for the athletic facilities bridge. Just something that you might consider here. Obviously, if you did that, that's money that could be used for air quality or something else, but just something to consider at least in the short term. Does the revenue make sense at least high level? The good news, when I first did that, the good news for me, I wanted to make sure we at least got past the $700,000 threshold, otherwise we're going to have problems, we certainly did, so. And then lastly, water and sewer infrastructure and broadband. You know, it can be used to improve drinking water, it can be used to construct publicly owned treatment infrastructure, manage and treat stormwater, subsurface drainage water. So this could even get into works of some of the stuff we have there as well. I'm sure somebody, whoever that person was, that went underneath train tracks would have preferred money to use for this before the flood, but we could do that. It also can be used for cybersecurity to protect water and sewer. Interestingly, a lot of things that are being hacked, water and sewer systems are, we saw in public transport transit systems in DC, and fortunately they are being attacked. And then also in terms of broadband, there's a lot in here, but essentially, if we want to do the project, it needs to, at completion, reliably deliver upload and download speeds of 100 meg. So it's designed to go to those rural areas and impoverished areas where there's no or exceptionally slow, probably like old school dial-up AOL type connections, to create more reliable and faster speed connections. So, there's a lot there, like I said, there's only four buckets, but in those buckets, you can see there are a lot of options. And wanted to kind of get together with everybody and lay out what the town's getting, and over $6 million, it's a good amount of money. Some opportunities to do that and see if there's any questions.
Just to comment, just kudos to you, taking 150, something pages and sort of putting those acumen that you can all go through and make a decision, and it's very clear. So thank you, we appreciate it. So, I mean, again, the purpose of this meeting is to share this information with you so that you understand the border parameters, the timeframe, the legalities, and all the options that are available to the town. This is a great problem to have, a problem, it's a great benefit for the town, $6 million we have, and let's try to figure out what's the best way to use it so that it affects the most number of people leaving the responsible. So at this point, will, if any questions, any suggestions you have, we're not asking you to make any decisions now, this is a lot to absorb, I'm sure you'll go back and then we'll, our questions will be happy to. We're not asking you to make any decisions now. This is a lot to absorb. I'm sure you'll go back and there will be more questions we'll be happy to answer. Jeff has been involved with other towns and some towns have actually hired consultants to come in and unpack this stuff and share with the community and the elected officials. So there are different ways you can go about this. But this, I believe, is, you know, if we can put this nicely, do a very concise and condensed version and and probably not for your comments and, and yes, suggestions, questions.
Good question, Joe. And thanks for the presentation. You had workers who were begging to give to the three schools. What are the ones for these waters? Oh, water, but they're both, like, have any idea what those?
Those are the leave are in the two, or the non-range each. Are there any grants that there is access to want to? Let's not use the money now for the water. I think grants can get us to the bottom of it. The new, well, the currently debated infrastructure project in Washington does have a, a leave from the last number I saw, of course, the final, but it was fifty or sixty billion for water and sewer. And it's a national problem and Washington realizes this is a national problem. So there are those programs. There are also other opportunities we could avail ourselves of the Clean Water Fund and the related state programs that offer two percent twenty year loans. Realistically, if we went out to borrow, we could probably borrow on our own name for less than two percent right now. So that would probably be the hurdle. But there are those opportunities as well as deep, not only the space and the clean water fund loan, but they also have parallel grant programs. So when we did the voucher broke, interceptor and all of that work, there was grant and a loan.
We made the presentations, I believe, for the last session for the farm station and the plot of the request. We haven't done it until so far. So that's an angle we have tried for the more
I know Tom reached out and no, Rick reached out to the D governors office and others. Those tend to be longer term. In other words, it can be, it can be a portion of the process go forward. But can certainly be worthwhile, especially if you're bringing I don't want to beat the head horse, but personally, it's concerning to use the fire trucks. It is very distinction because of the professional workers is volunteer departments, like most of our guys are themselves. And there, it's very clear that we cannot use the money to buy those trucks. That's all they can express. It's not completely clear, but those who have, where I've seen any community appropriate any of this money for a fire truck, they've done a joint appropriation at the same time, saying, if the treasury declines, we will use fund balance. They've appropriated in anticipation that it might not work. Could we use any similar, since we're taking some of this money for, it's already allocated, right? For schools and everything, I think all this. Could we have that kind of a backup plan? Not a plan per se, but sort of the back burner? If we went to go that route? You could, you certainly, you could appro, you could appropriate it for, I guess, you're right, appropriate for anything and backstop it with the appropriation of fund balance. So that the hundred twenty day window comes up. I can kind of check and send it back to the US Treasury based on. I guess my recommendation is if you feel like it is a low probability that we accept it. It would probably be wise to go in a different direction, but we certainly could do that. Great job, Wes.
I have a question on, okay, number one. You want to open the assistance for households, small businesses, I guess it's kind of the same thing. It's will be strictly for mitigating costs, losses, things like that, or preventative. Things for COVID really couldn't be used for enhancing the business. You know what I'm saying? It's more for dealing directly with COVID.
COVID or COVID related, one area of
Systems, something like that.
Right. Or potentially if you wanted to do permanent outdoor seating, some communities have been discussing permanent outdoor seating, which I think you could tie in because that wasn't a direct response. Restaurants had to stay open. But as far as, say, for example, renovating a bathroom, I guess unless you have a serious air quality issue there, probably.
Yeah, most do. Also, I, there was some, I thought I read that there was the business had a partner, some, but I'm going back. I read the email you sent us a couple times. I probably saw something in it with the business. Uh, maybe not.
Well, if we give it to the business, that's where they have to provide us documentation. Oh, we could do it. We could do in time assistance.
Well, this is longs, grants for in fact, it's so we could do something like fifty fifty program or.
Could be, it could be that, or we could offer aid so we can do some of our management funding to help if we were helping that. So we had like, let's say we have a small business administration in town, you offer assistance to them. Buy incoming services like accounting, but I mean, so in time speed, but that would also relate to it.
Okay, I understand.
And then you pull it into the general fund to pay for those costs.
Just a question of water sewer type stuff. You know, here in town, we have three different districts. How do we navigate the problem of doing a project that, you know, if, if it was done by the water district, it would be paid by certain customers? How do we navigate that whole thing where we pick a project that says in Worthington?
You mean here or just in general?
Well, I, I mean, maybe the answer to that in general answers my question. I don't know.
They get their, their, their own two entities, really, and Kensington and really pick their projects.
Do you tie into them?
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. If we pick the project here, that one is because you're talking East Berlin, so I'm assuming that's Worthington.
No, that's, 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 that was the fourth sale, yeah.
So the ones you're talking about are the ones that are not dealt by Worthington or.
I think there's a distinction between directly in the property, so directly onto the streets where they would be part of them. Versus you, you could realistically say that those other two districts flow in. If you were to look at a map, we essentially completely surround Worthington. It's basically sitting in the middle of Berlin Water Control. So you, pretty much every project we do is going to the impact. We did voucher broke, the sewage goes through because it has to get to Manabasset. So it will ultimately help. When we do a normal project, we actually charge them back. Just they are a customer and they charge their customers for it.
So what would happen in these cases where the grant is funded?
When, you know, charged back, they would benefit from it.
Those particular households in that district. Sorry.
And it's anywhere where they can fight for the grant.
They do not get it. They can work with us. So you could use this money direct, give that a grant directly to them if they had some project in Kensington, the fire district. Or the fire houses as not-for-profits. You can do that with not-for-profits as well if you choose. It just makes that a subrecipient, which means he's still a responsibility for determining how we're going to give that money, how it's going to be used, validated, used appropriately.
When the water department does a project like this, they get a bond for three million or whatever it's going to cost. Does that go against their rate payers or does that go against the regular taxes?
It goes against the rate payers, but Kensington, if, if they are, depending on where they are in the stream. Kensington and or Worthington would be considered a rate payer if they're using it, but they're
I'm saying it. The water department will bill, Worthington Water Department will bill Worthington's customer and get the paper. Just like Worthington.
It is not part of your bill rate at all. Now, it does cross the river.
It's a separate fund.
It is a proprietary fund, which essentially means it's a business-like fund. It has to be its own self-sufficient entity, including CAPR. So it has to run on its own balance.
Worthington customer would be paying for the Worthington improvement.
And the part of town that isn't a part of any of the three doesn't pay for any.
And if we went in a different way, we could end up actually doing disproportionate.
Absolutely.
Now, if you're collecting, say, you got laid off as a co, you got missed this part. You got laid off and you're collecting unemployment, do you qualify for that cash incentive or you don't?
The town could choose to offer incremental unemployment benefits.
No, I mean, if you were, you, you collected unemployment, so realistically, even though you lost it, you were collecting, you really didn't have a loss of income. Collected that thousand dollars a week, whatever amount was, and some of them were collecting more than they were, they were making actually. They really don't, they, they qualify for that?
Well, the qualifications would have to be established by the town if we wanted to go down that path, but in that scenario. To, to mitigate the risk of having to repay the treasury, I think that the criteria would say no. Because it has to be proportioned to your negative economic impact. So if you were given, if you were made whole by unemployment or better you really, there's no money to give you to offset your negative consequence because you were compensated by the title of state government. Good. No more questions? All right.
They never doesn't go home early, like.
Go home early.
I'm not going to think about it. You want it by seven?
Peter or Jeff, do you have anything before we break?
You know, I think.
Yeah, Jeff, do you have anything before we go?
Yeah, I think, you know, like you guys said, Kevin did an excellent job really summarizing a real comprehensive piece of legislation. The, you know, the one concern that I have is that the law that was published was an interim final rule. And what that meant was that it was subject to the final rulemaking process, which requires public comment. Public comment was received through the period ending July seventeenth. And the Treasury Department, you know, as they usually do with these programs, they issue FAQs that really provide a tremendous amount of answers in reading between the lines and interpreting the legislation. And the last set of FAQs from Treasury was before the conclusion of the, of the interim rule. And so the final rule hasn't been published yet. And if you look, for example, at the PPP program. A lot of folks that applied for PPP early on based on definitions and interpretations of terms such as rent and payroll. Didn't receive the benefits that later applicants received once the program was broadened. Because Congress found out that they had appropriated money that wasn't being used because the eligibility was too narrow. This program, however, because there's no application process and because there is a fair amount of time to use the money, I don't think suffers from those same issues. You know, the FAQs themselves, I think the last set of FAQs was about forty five pages long, single spaced. So I think Kevin did a really good job. You know, I've been in, I, two of my towns are hiring consultants. I've been in those interviews. You know, I can, if you're interested in hearing about that experience, I can talk with you offline about it, but I think Kevin covered what needs to be covered.
Thanks, Jeff.
Roche.
Peter, yes.
I, I just want to thank Kevin for his explanation. Even I understand most. That's all.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Peter. So with that, we'll go ahead and all right, thank you.